This is a board of commission work session, Monday, June the thirteenth to three thirty. I'm gonna do a roll call for the commission. Mr. Burson.
President.
Mr. Pope.
President.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Barnum.
President.
Chairs here. Let's uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Burson, if he would, to please to send prayer.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you, God, for this day that you have made. Father, we pray, God, that you will bless us and we deliverate the business of this county. We pray, God, that you continue to bless the citizens of this county and this city. We pray, God, that you would just continue to be with us. We pray, God, that you would just look upon our nation, oh God. We pray that you would just give us the covering that we need, oh God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Blessed be Jesus' name to the life of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, being invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have any guest speaker?
Didn't, I didn't have anybody to show up tonight.
Okay. Agenda item. Yeah, bid award for twenty twenty-one CDBG street paving, flooding and drainage improvement. And that's on. That's in the Emerson Park area for the CDBG grant. We had seven hundred and fifty thousand and then we uh, overall job is one billion, seven sixty-six, two eighty-six, fifty-five. Maybe we're gonna have to come up with a one billion, sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, fifty-five cent for the uh, that's gonna be from the Splot.
Yes, from the two thousand and fourteen Splot.
Okay.
We've had it budgeted for probably close to three years now.
Has everybody reviewed this?
Yes.
Anybody, any discussion on it? Anything that we need to talk about? Scott, with this pretty well uh, take care of all of the roads out there now, far as paving.
Yes, sir. I think there's uh, we added, if Brandon's here, we added some, there was some other areas that we were gonna try to do outside of that that needed to be um, uh, improved also. And Brandon, do you, is Brandon sitting back there anywhere?
It.
Okay, well, there's, I know this, there are some areas around it that's still gonna need some work with some other funds. We talked about using L-MIG to try to get some of those done also.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna take care of that drainage down?
Oregon. Virginia.
Virginia or Oregon, what, down to that canal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now that, there's a lot, I've had a lot of calls on that thing.
Yeah, and I believe Public Works has had quite a few calls, complaints over the years on that one area there.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I think they want some of them ditches filled up out there.
Yep.
Yeah. You got anything else on it? No, let's carry it over to the. All right. Bid award for the swamp road paving improvement. Big.
Yes, sir. This, this project here, uh, we, we got a change order from East Coast a couple of months ago. And then uh, was sent out for bids just to see what the prices would come back at. And Alan Old's Construction turned in the lowest bid at forty-six thousand, forty-three dollars and fifty cent. Uh, to do those here, I think there's three areas of patching.
So the change order, the East Coast presented to us, they're not going to honor that change order at forty-seven thousand dollars?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir. Yep.
So they won't order, honor that first one that they put out? Okay. I don't mind if everything's going.
We had a, we had an open contract with what they did at Old Nichols Highway. And so they use those same qualities just to, because there was a gap there that they would have to, before the next project began to go to. And they would have had a space in there of a couple of weeks to, to knock it out and be done. So that was kind of a fill-in, so to speak.
So I guess they figured they could make more money and rebid it out, right?
Yes, sir. Yep.
How much was the change order?
Uh, forty thousand, I think. Little over forty thousand. It was right at about forty-one, I believe.
That was the original one.
And the bid, their bid, they went up to seventy-eight thousand, correct?
Correct, yes, for East Coast.
Seventy-eight thousand.
Mm-hmm.
It didn't need no work. Okay, any more on it? Let's carry it over. All right, alcohol license application for thirty-seven ninety-eight memorial drive.
Yes, sir. This uh, this application, this alcohol license application was um, was presented at the last meeting, commission meeting, and there was some concerns uh, related to um, um, the maturity of being on the premises out there. I spoke to the sheriff about it and uh, he informed me that there is a off-duty deputy there while they're open from s- uh, from seven PM to ten PM, when they close at ten. And so he's there uh, in uniform and uh, more or less patrolling that area of both, both, both buildings.
Okay. Is any more discussion on it?
One.
Go ahead.
So that deputy, is that someone that's on duty or that's someone they?
Off-duty that they hired.
They hired, okay.
Ms. McQuaid hires to be there when they're open.
Are they in uniform or they in plain clothes?
They're in uniform.
Okay.
Is, is this establishment, one, one side of it be where you take the alcohol to be sold and uh, with children or?
This is only for the bowling alley, is that right?
Only for the bowling alley.
Yeah.
Only, and it's separated from the other?
Correct.
There's, there's uh, about thirty, twenty, thirty, forty foot in between the two buildings. And uh, sceneries on the further south and then the bowling alleys plus the further north.
Okay, so it's not in the same building?
It's not in the same building. No, sir. We did some research. We called Striker's Home, uh, Kelly called several different places. And those bowling alleys uh, all have a full, full service bar, so to speak.
But their full-service bar has a, a door that closes the bar off?
Yeah, I, I just saw a picture because I didn't see what, how it was.
Does she have like a little area? Like go behind the door or?
It's uh, basically how it's set up now. And I, I think she'll do whatever she needs to do. Um, but basically how it is now, if you go to, you go to the front door is the bowling alley. Then you got where you pay for your bowling or whatever. You used to pay for your bowling, get your shoes and so forth on the right. Right, and then far to the left, um, or far to the right down the street ahead on the end wall, um, there's a, there's an area there that where you should serve concessions and so forth. And it'll be there. So now have pool tables and uh, and all that in there as well.
Okay. Will the kids gonna be allowed to go in there and go bowling, do you think? Say if the church wanted to take ten head of kids out there for Saturday afternoon?
The church can rent.
Huh?
The church can rent the facility.
But I'm talking about like on a Friday or Saturday night, can I take my kids out there if I had to?
Yeah, you can't. So I mean, if you, if you tell her she needs to put a, a petition off and have the bar set, and I think she'll do that, um, you can put conditions on it, whatever conditions you want. So um, it'll go from there.
Well, I think she's doing a very good thing for the county, especially for her kids. Uh, have somewhere to go instead of riding the roads and.
And, and our ordinance, as most ordinances, it defines what a bar is. And um, it all depends on sales, alcohol sales versus um, other items. So um, and I don't know those numbers I'll tell them here, but. So you could actually require her to submit a report of what she sold or whatever and, and go from that. Um, and if she ever classifies as a bar, then anybody below eighteen or twenty-one, whatever, the, the state law says, can't go in.
Right.
Um, but the places that we've called, you know, I don't know how they're set up, the places that we've called Kelly told me, um, the places she called has a full-service bar for both.
So as it stands right now, she meets all the requirements that?
She meets her requirements.
Meets all the requirements, so we'd be hard-pressed to deny.
It's a privilege, so you can, you need a reason, but it's not a guarantee, it's a privilege, so.
Yeah.
You need something that you can articulate the reason why you can add it.
And we was talking about the petition and that that's something that uh, I guess, would your department recommend something like that or how did that play out, you know?
And we can do that if you say there's got to be a, uh, you know, that you approve something to a separation. Um, you know, that, that we would just uh, require them to put in a separation there.
Had that been done in the past where you had to separate?
We've not had this situation, this is the first for us. And um, the bowling alley was, was just the old bowling alley and she's went out and done all the work, so we hadn't had that, that um, issue passed, so.
So this is a request for a license for wine, beer, and a still spirit?
Yes, sir.
Like cocktails, whiskey, that.
Right, sir.
So this is everything?
Everything. And you, as the county attorney may correct me, but I think you can grant, you don't have to grant all three. They, if they have a reason, and they say, well, we'll do malt beverages and wine, but not grant.
Well, I, what I was gonna do was just read the, I did have the statutory language I pulled. This is OCGA three dash three dash two that talks about the granting or refusal or suspension or revocation of a permit or a license. The governing authorities shall set forth ascertainable standards in the local licensing ordinance, which we have, upon which all decisions pertaining to these permits or licenses shall be based. So, you know, in accordance with Commissioner Burse is, what we need to do is look at our standards and see if they meet those standards. Um, and then, and I was just asking Scott, you know, let's be able to articulate, you know, very clearly whatever decision we're gonna make as far as if we grant the permit, but then we have certain conditions on it, you know, why that would need to be that way, recognizing that it could be challenged if we have not um, had certain conditions on others of a similar type, which I was trying to think of any examples that you might have had come before you, and I'm not sure there have been any. Um, yeah.
In other words, it, she's, all, everything she's passed, I mean, the laws, she's within the law.
She's met our ordinance.
She's met all the requirement, everything, okay.
Because our ordinance.
As long as she meets the requirement.
Our ordinance as far as location, just addresses schools, churches.
Okay.
So.
All right. So if I'm over there at the bowling alley and I wanna walk out to skating rink, I can't take a beer with me? If I, if I drink, I don't drink, I, I'm just saying.
I think, and I don't, don't quote me on this because I don't hold me to this, but I don't think we have outside drinking in our ordinance. So I think it may say that, and don't hold me to this, but you may have to come out in a package, uh, like a brown bag or, or a bag, covered up bag, so. Um, which they shouldn't be doing that. They shouldn't be traveling back and forth. So.
Drinking not gonna be allowed at the skating rink though, is it?
Right, no, if you're in a skating rink.
That, you could actually post, have, you know, make it's part of a requirement, post a sign at the door that basically says, no alcohol beyond this point, or something like that.
Right.
So that way you, you give them a heads up.
And they also have to post, you know, this normal drinking stuff, no alcohol, any person under twenty-one and, and that, that sort of thing.
Right. And that's why I'm glad our attorney brought that up because if we do put certain stipulations, we need to go and do that on the front end, I guess, rather than after they get there and start coming, say, well, you need to do this, now you need to do that. And we can kind of uh, be proactive and say, well, okay, you know, we're granting this license, continuing on you doing X, Y, Z, you know, posting the signs and or if their wall is required or something separation, you know.
Right.
And I guess that, that would have to come from somebody. I don't know if it'd be from your department or where.
Well, we probably have to write, define a um, recreation and payment or something like that, and then have to be there that you have to have a um, a division.
I think she would follow that. I mean, I just, I would hate to come down harsh on somebody and not give them what they're asking for whenever she's doing the good that she's doing for our community.
Okay. Any more? Y'all got anything else on it? Carry it over to the meeting. D, opposed ordinance amendment, mobile home, homestead decal.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the, the county attorney drafted this ordinance and I'm gonna ask her if she can respond to it insofar as answering any questions, if there's any, but it's basically to codify y'all's decision that you made last, at the last meeting.
Glad to answer any questions you all have, but basically, as you'll recall, the state is no longer requiring um, the permitting. And so if we desired to put it in the local ordinance, we could. And my understanding after um, the tax commissioner presented it to you all was that you desired um, for permitting of the regular, kind of what I'll call personal property mobile homes, but not the real property mobile, mobile homes, which are the ones that have actually been uh, joined with the real estate underneath, and so they can receive a homestead exemption. The rationale being that those are, you know, permanent to that, um, that real estate, that property, so they're not moving around. If the tax commissioner has anything to add, certainly, but, but I think that's a quick overview of what the intent is.
Okay. Roger, does that mean when you take the tongues off of them, take the wheels out and under them, and then you set it down and make a permanent home by that?
Yes, sir. They have, and they have to file those with clerk of courts and really file those to the mobile homes.
Okay.
So those are, those are for the ones that are homestead.
If you, if it's homestead, then you don't have to have one.
Mobile homes under the law are actually personal property. They're taxed like personal property, like equipment or, you know, those sorts of things. But when you file that document with the clerk's, clerk of court's office, it transfers it. They hand over their title, their personal property title, and it makes it join to the land, and that makes it real property.
Yeah, I believe I had a deal with that way back. We used to have to, you gotta take the wheels off, take the tongue out, all that off of it. That was one of some of the requirements before you could make it homestead. That'd take all that off of it. So. You got anything on it? Y'all, y'all got anything?
I'm with the commission.
Mr. Tax Commissioner, you're, you're for this, right?
Yes, Captain.
Okay.
If it's homestead, homestead or mobile home, it's just like my house, and you're out there, everybody else.
Yeah, you don't have to have this thing.
It says to have a sticker in front of your window if you're out.
I agree.
Okay.
All right.
And I will say that stickers on the pre-bill, which is right back on pre-bill, which is um, the mobile home, it's easier to track if they're gonna move it, not just remain, we'll assess it then for the, the county department. And that's why, that's, that's the reason why I highly recommend that we keep the stickers for the pre-bills.
Okay.
Or not homestead.
All right. All right, thank you, Roger. Okay, E, we'll carry that one over. Airport ground lease agreement.
Yes, sir. This is a uh, a hanger lease uh, with Mr. Nick Cantrell.
Cantrell.
Uh, for hanger number A-ten, uh, at one seventy-five a month or twenty-one hundred dollars a year.
Okay. Anybody got, got anything on that?
And Scott, and I know these are one-year lease, so is this lease just starting with Mr. Cantrell or?
Yes, sir.
So he would have to come back in January twenty twenty-three and redo it for the full year?
That's correct.
Right now it'd be for, basically six months.
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. Any more? All right, we'll carry that one over. Okay, this is the uh, public road closure relocation for Roscoe Mixon Road. That's on Mr. Tommy Rouse. Let's see that. We talked about that, didn't we? Uh, anybody got anything on that? Yeah. Brandon, where Brandon at? Didn't we get the right-of-way, Brandon? Where we waiting? He needed it to. Well, we got to get it voted to close it before you can use it on. No, but the church was gonna do that fifteen-foot. Explain what's going on, Brandon.
The uh, what they, uh, Rouses told us, there's been some discussions in the church, which is uh, where it's for the Baptists, I think it is.
Yeah.
About wanting to do an addition, that we go out into the existing right-of-way. And so the Rouses are asking to move the roadway down to the southern property line. And I can't remember the gentleman's name. It said Jason to the church. And I think uh, we was gonna, potentially move the church for all the conditions.
Yeah, the, the church is, the church has agreed to give another fifteen-foot right-of-way through there, to the Rouses. Then the Rouses turn around, deed all of that to the county to replace, but Roscoe Mixon Road right there. So we'll have a forty-five-foot road going back there to the Rouse's property. And they'll pay for the uh, survey, all of that stuff. Rouses will.
I think the last road, we agreed to move over, change the alignment or whatever. I think the property owner did that work under your um, supervision.
Yes, sir.
What the property, what work on this project, all the property owners who are requesting this going to do?
Uh, I think.
Well, they want the county to do it. Is that right, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
He, he wants the county to do it because uh. The church is wanting to close down. Yeah, the church is wanting the property, so it's kind of, they sort of forcing the, the Rouses to give up that road. And so they agreed to give fifteen-foot on, more on the front side. So, and then if the county will build a road theirself, you know, which, there ain't gonna be no, nothing to do but grade it and put one pipe in it. And then they'll give the, back to the church on the backside. Okay. I think that's the way out.
Okay, that's, that's, that's one of the question, concerns I had. I think if I'm not mistaken, way back, we had a road off of uh, one fifty-eight, I believe, out there somewhere, what at uh, Central Melton? In that area where we, they came in, they requested to, I guess, to move the road over, but then the way our ordinance, I guess, reads right now, the way we do it, the property owner had to pay to have that road done, right?
Some Gillis Road.
Norman Gillis Road.
Okay, all right, so they had to pay to have that done, right?
Yes, sir.
But they had to do it to our standards?
Yes, sir.
So what would be the difference in this situation right here?
Well, the church is requesting to close Roscoe Mixon Road where they can extend their church across the road.
Right.
Or, right now, the church sits just about right on the landline where the road is. They're wanting to add on, so it will cross the Roscoe Mixon Road. They want to close it off. And the church gave Mr. Rouse thirty-foot right-of-way at the far end of the property for private lane to go back to his granddaughter's house. And the road's already there now. It's got ditches on it, everything's just like a road, all it needs is a good grading and a pipe put in.
Right, so.
And the Rouses, they said they'll pay for the survey to get the other fifteen-foot done. And uh, some of the roadwork, and the county just had to put a pipe in.
So this is not the same situation like?
I believe it's a totally different type of situation. Because I mean, Mr. Rouse put it in a spot where they got to do something. In other words, his dumb granddaughter have access to getting her property. Yeah, because the church wants to build, they want to take Roscoe, old Roscoe Mixon.
Right, that's what I'm looking at. So, yeah, Brandon, is that pretty much the way that you saw it?
That was what Mr. Rouse told us, we met with him out there. I haven't spoken with any of the people that were with the church personally, I can't.
What kind of money are we talking about? Let me ask Michael. Michael, could you tell us about what it would cost to grade that piece up, I think? That would help Mr. Burse. Have you looked at it? You haven't looked at it?
About how long was it, Chairman? Do you remember?
It was probably about. Steve, how long did that whole road?
I'd say it.
It was a quarter? And how long a quarter mile?
No, it was probably eight, about two tenths, three tenths of a mile.
And it ain't, and all it gonna need to do is just take the grader because it's, there's no wet spots, no dirty holes.
Just in, just a way, you know, general principle, Chairman, grading per mile for a road?
Yeah.
If you were gonna bid that out as a contractor, that goes for, I know a lot of things can go into that, but if you were just, and there's clearing involved.
Yeah.
If you were just looking at grading, pulling the ditches and establishing grade, is that like five hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand a mile? Would you be less than that or?
Probably uh. Grading it up, probably be a thousand dollars a mile, maybe. Just running the grader on it.
So, am I, am I understanding?
Talking about eight, so you, you.
No, it's eight.
Yeah.
About three, two.
Maybe five hundred dollars. Worth of work.
So.
Those are ditches is already there?
So the ditch is there, so basically the road already started that way?
Yes, already.
Roads are already there.
Roads are already there.
Roads there.
Just be, add fifteen-foot to it.
What it needs is haring up and re-grading. And he said that he would harry it up, get all the grass out, he'd spray it and hair it, get it ready, and now all the grader had to do was come in and shape it. And all the grader had to do was come in and shape it. That, that's what Mr. Rouse said. Mr. Rouse said that he would do that. So we're looking at maybe a cost of
Couple hundred bucks.
Day's work for one grader.
I mean, I'm not, I guess, so much, not so much focusing on the, their amount as to setting the precedent. If we, just like with the Gibbs Road out there, whatever. And like I said, that's what I'm trying to find out, if it's apples to apples. And right now you're telling me it's not apples to apples. This is a different situation altogether.
Yeah.
I think all the property owner just wanted out at Norman Gillis Road. They just wanted the road slid over from their house.
Yeah.
Because the road was kind of placed behind. They just want to slide it down, so.
Okay.
That's sense and what.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, like I said, I just don't want us to, you know, over a can of worms here and somebody to come along and say, well, you know, hey, wanna get the same thing, you know, and we're gonna be hard pressed to deny them unless we can come up with a real justifiable reason as to why we not doing it, but we're doing it for someone else, you know? And I think it's great the church going to expand and all of that. And like I said, it's not so much about the cost, it's just if we set the precedent here, you know?
What I saw and what I was told, that the county, Roscoe Mixon Road, that's a county road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there's no, there's no upkeep or grading. It's gravel.
They put, brought some buildings or something and put out.
It was church. The church.
So who's going to maintain this little tiny little road that you can't turn around on in here? We're gonna have to send graders in there constantly that go up and pull back, and that's it, or?
It appears that that's what the Rousas are, if the county was gonna build the road for the Rousas, we would be taking that right-of-way over and the county would be responsible for maintaining.
I understood that Mr. Rouse would maintain the road. That's not the case now?
I don't think that's what they propose.
No, he wants to give, he wants to give up the old Roscoe Mixon Road and let it be a private road. I get, that's what I understood. And the new road around here, the county, then the county would maintain it, just like they do the old Roscoe Mixon Road.
Okay, well, I thought the Roscoe Mixon Road was gonna be used where they would expand the church.
They'd be closed off. They gonna, they gonna build a building on it.
That's what I'm saying. So really it won't even, it won't be a road anymore?
And that's the way I understand it.
I had it spoken to the church.
Yeah, Roscoe Mixon Road be closed off.
Closed off and the new road will be used around on the front, on the, or on the west side.
So basically we're vote, Scott, to abandon Roscoe Mixon Road and then build them a new road at county expense. Is that what we're talking about?
Correct, but to make it legitimate, if it's gonna be our road to maintain, you would need it to be surveyed and deeded to the county.
Right. And drainage and all that.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just as far as clarity procedure-wise, I do believe if we are closing a county road, it would require us to advertise and have a public hearing for that purpose. And then, and we did do that, if you recall, on that Norman Gillis Road. And then take a vote to close that road as far as Roscoe Mixon. And then we would ask for a survey and also a deed, which our office could draft if you like, for them to, you know, deed any new property if that's the commission's desire. So there are some steps that would need to be taken before we can take a vote tonight.
Plus a cost projection.
Right.
For us to vote.
Plus a cost.
And then also, who will maintain that road? I mean?
Well, that, if they are deeding it to the county for the purpose of a county road, now I guess that's, you know, kind of an option, option one or option A. You know, option B would be just to close Roscoe Mixon Road. I don't know who else uses that road for access other than the landowners back there, but they could have a.
There's a cemetery back there too.
Okay, well, they could have a private right-of-way. And I think under Georgia law, they still, you know, even if it's not a county-maintained road, you know, family members have a right to get to a cemetery of that type. So that would be another option, which may be more palatable to certain commissioners. So then the county's not maintaining the road in the future, but still allow those, those folks to have access and allow the church to expand. Obviously more cost on their part. So just some things to think through. I don't know that we're ready to take a vote on it tonight because we'd have to have the public hearing to close the road in any event.
I think we'd have to have to let them deed this, that road to the county. We, once we get the deed to that new road. And then we could act on closing that other one. And I guess the question is, will the county accept doing that work to grade it up?
Well, I'm kind of like.
Is that what we want to know?
Mr. Chairman, I'm kind of like Mr. Commissioner Burse. I believe we're gonna be stepping off into a fire here if we do this. If we just say, yes, we'll take this road and we'll start maintaining it, we'll start paying for it, you know?
Well, if they deed it to us, it's our road and then we'd close.
But when you open that door, how many other people are gonna come up and want to deed their stuff to us? And if we accept this one, then we're gonna have to accept all of it.
And that, that road right now, Mr. Brooks? Y'all maintain that Roscoe Mixon Road now?
We haven't operated in years. This is church building and then they were building down the road and church helped for that. We've not had to go back in there very seldom.
Better than wanting for that, county be maintaining it, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just make sure you follow the same procedures you follow with the one up and the big. Make sure you're on the same.
Some of that Gillis.
Run Gillis, make sure you follow the same, same guideline.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, what'd you recommend we do?
Well, you know, with the road that they're looking at deeding over, there's thirty-foot there now, or would be a thirty-foot. Is that thirty-foot existing and then they would add another fifteen-foot to it? So it'd be forty-five? Well, we definitely, as he said, because of how it's ordinance, so we're gonna have to do it with the public hearing and do it the same process. Now, whether the county commission wants us to go in and grade that after the fact, then that would be a county commission decision.
Cross that bridge when we get to it. But right now, to go back to what the Turner said, first thing we need to do is do the public hearing to abandon this road, right?
Well, to the chairman's point, I think, and I think it's a good one, is it may not be the desire to abandon the road if, you know, the county's not willing to make the, the other alternative road, a county road for the future. So I think probably the first step is further communication with both, you know, the, the landowners in the back and the church folks to understand, you know, exactly what they are willing to do. Are they willing to, they already said they would survey it. Are they willing to grade it? And I think what we required of the Norman Gillis Road folks is that they would bring it up to county standards with the idea that then there's no violation of the gratuities clause because basically, you know, we're, they're moving the road for us. The county's not absorbing that cost. And then the county's just responsible for the maintenance as they were with the road before. So my, my recommendation on the first step would be communicating with both the landowners in the back and the church to determine, you know, what they are willing to do. And then the commission can make a decision on how to proceed based on what information we gain from that.
So the church would have to petition, plan the cage, not closing the road off?
Correct.
Correct?
And, and they can do that whether or not, you know, we decide to do this alternative. I mean, they, they could do that by themselves, but a landowner has a right to get to their property. So if that road was closed, then that landowner could petition the superior court to have a private way.
They got, the Rousas already got a thirty-foot right-of-way going back there to that place now. They got a right-of-way now.
Right, so.
They do use it sometimes.
So the point being that, you know, even more so in that case, that the, the road closure itself does not hinge on whether the county accepts or does not accept.
So what we need to do is get that road deeded to the county and the fifteen-foot and go ahead and get that right-of-way approved first. And then we can close the other one or whatever. You gotta go there first.
If that's the desire of the commission, yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else got any more on it?
Set it on the gin if we're meeting before.
Carry it over to the meeting. Carry it over to the meeting.
Then we proceed and not proceed whatever road is.
Let's carry it over to the meeting. Okay. Alright, appointment for Wake Cross, Ware County Planning Commission, post one and nine.
There is a attached letter to that from Mr. Schuber, basically saying that Mr. Bryson would like to be reappointed to post one. And now is the county's turn to appoint someone to post nine because that has rotated back to the county now. And I don't know if there's anyone that you all have in mind for that. But they have to be a county resident outside of the incorporated limits of Wake Cross.
And I.
We have any appointment, anybody in mind?
Mr. Bryson wants to do it, let him have it.
Well, he, he stays in there.
He'll stay in post one, but we'll need someone for post nine.
That means we, we got to appoint somebody for nine too?
Yes, sir.
And they need to live inside the city limits or?
Outside, they would need to live in the incorporated.
Bill lives in the county.
I'm sorry?
Said Bill lives out in the county.
Yes, but also.
But he's staying at post one, then he's to post nine.
Yeah, we need someone for post nine.
Post nine is a city, but it rotates to us.
But it rotated back to the county now. I mean, how often does it rotate?
Every year.
Every year.
We got to get one that lives in the county. Y'all got anybody in mind? Hold on. Gary Poncev.
No, sir.
How about Mr. Kenan? We'll keep y'all involved.
They probably nominated Mr. Stevenson though, he's not here.
Maybe we'll think of somebody, let's carry it over to the meeting. Like, come up with somebody.
I think it goes to affect July one, is it?
And we'll still have enough for four of them, even if we go into, in July or December.
We carry it over to the next meeting if you want, just do that for both of them.
Let's just get it over. Our appointment, South Georgia Area Agency on aging.
Yes, sir. This is for an appointment. They're saying, there's a note there that I included in your packet, Ms. Marna. Schuman would like to be reappointed to that position.
She just won't be reappointed yet.
Yes, sir.
Maybe she can help.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody got anything on that? Alright, commission, do they have any items? Attorney Manager?
Yes, sir. I've got, I think there's like four things. I'll try to get through these pretty quick. We will, just as a reminder, we'll have to set the SPOS budget to try to get that formulated. So we'll have that as part of the documentation on the referendum. So we still have a few more days to try to work on a budget. And I didn't know how y'all wanted to proceed, if y'all wanted to just, if, what I send out, if you want to respond to that, till we can get one formulated. But we need to try to have it nailed down and complete by the end of this month. Because we could have a call meeting on June the thirtieth, which is a Monday, to approve that and also approve the resolution to call for the referendum then. So it gives us time to get the information to the Board of Elections Office. So we still have a few more days. I just kind of mentioned that, so you could be thinking about it for ideas as far as the budget and so forth.
Alright, so when you talk about the budget, other words, based on the projection that we have received from the SPOS, then the project that we have, this is what we're trying to see what we'll be on that?
Yes, sir. You know, we met with the city and, and it was agreed that the level-two project would be the Albany Avenue, Albany Avenue Overpass. But each jurisdiction's gonna have to create their own budget. How do they want to do that? And then have that approved as far as a commission action. And so all that would need to be done by the end of this month so we could wrap it all up.
Kind of, you have the difference between the level-one and level-two. I know I.
Level, level-one is, is really joint projects, so to speak, that are mandated by, mandated by the state to do. More or less court-related things, projects, so forth.
There's a list that defines what a level-one project is, but it can be like a courthouse or something of that sort, but there's a list of what those are.
Right. You know, something like with the Health Department or something that's countywide, that's, that's we're mandated to do by the state. Level-two is just, just a joint project, but it has to be a joint project that benefits all county citizens, all county. Not unincorporated, but county, you know, complete county, whole county. And so that's the difference.
Kind of something like an overpass over the railroad.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a level-two. Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I just use that for an example.
Right, yes, sir. And so anyway, once we do that, then the end of this month, we'll give the attorney time to draft the resolution, making sure the agreement's together and working with the city on that. So I think the city's gonna try to finalize their SPOS budget the end of this week, if I read that correctly in the newspaper. The only other thing, the other thing dealing with budgets is the issue with our, our operational budget for the county. You know, once we have an idea of what the commission may do with the mileage rate, then we can finalize that. Because right now it's, we're kind of in a holding pattern, so to speak, till we can nail that down. And I would like to try to go ahead and get the commission at some time, pretty soon, to vote on a mileage rate, at least to the point to where we can, you know, know how to finish up the budget.
So we got some figures that we can look at?
We do, we do. We don't have them right now, but I could get that for you and send that out to you so we can be, you know, be discussed. Because like I said, we don't know until, till that's done, how to, how to tweak the budget to make that match our revenues. Also too, the Jamestown project, the Tanner Lane project, we have public hearing scheduled on June the twenty-seventh at six PM. That's mandated that we have it at least, no earlier than six PM. So we have that going now. It's being, the property's been posted. There's notices in the newspaper for the public hearing. So what we'll need to do then, I believe, is to have the public hearing at six and then have a call meeting to immediately follow that, to, to pass the resolution to do that.
Somebody's already towards signing them out there.
Really? Yeah, they just, I believe engineering just posted that Friday, I think, maybe, Friday afternoon.
So what's the purpose of the public hearing?
To have, because of the condemnations with the property out there, we have to do it by state law. You know, I believe, I don't know if you've been part of that loop in the conversation, but that's what the attorney's office has told us.
So it will be in relation to the condemnation of the property needed for the bridge?
That's correct, yes, sir. Yep.
And how many properties are we talking about, three?
Uh, two. There's two properties, joint, there's one of the properties jointly owned and the other one is a sole owner.
And what will the vote be for? What will we be voting on?
I'm sorry?
After the co-hearing, what will we vote on?
Resolution to officially move to condemn the property. Yes, sir.
How is that thing coming out there? Is it, that, that job is, I mean, is it coming all out?
Yes, sir, I believe this is almost to the point now where it could be bid.
Just waiting, you're just waiting on the.
We're waiting on this process because we don't want to get the cart before the horse. And then start doing that and something happen with the, you know, the condemnations.
You don't want the company to have to hold its price any longer than completely necessary.
Yeah.
Then the price comes up.
Yeah, and once we know this has been buttoned up, then we can push the button, so to speak.
We can go and give them a notice to proceed. And when it bid.
Went fast and didn't hurt.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing is, uh, a couple of meetings ago, we uh had an item on the agenda for participation of fireworks uh celebration. And um so the only amounts that we got from uh sponsorship, corporate sponsorships is two thousand dollars. I don't know if, if Brandon, Brandon was kind of helping me on that to try to see if we could um drum up support. And uh what I'm showing is two thousand unless Brandon has any that he knows of. Um, you didn't, okay, just making sure. Um, so we have two thousand through corporate sponsor and I didn't know if that would be something the commission want to discuss and maybe talk, talk about it during the meeting or take action or vote on it during the meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, since we got a little time, just for clarification purposes, go back this Roscoe Mixon Road situation because I'm, I'm still kind of a little cloudy about that as far as the Roscoe Mixon Road right now, which premise is this, you say that the county doesn't have to maintain it because.
Church keeps it up.
They, church keeps it up. All right. And if uh if we, I guess, abandon, I guess that'd be the right choice of word, words here, abandon that road, because it is a county road, then relocate it over here. They would deed fifteen feet of property, I mean, for easement, right?
Plus thirty.
Plus the thirty feet.
Yeah.
And you're saying it's pretty much like a road already in there.
Right, they got, they gonna give another thirty foot on this side over.
Right. Okay, going into it. And then all we gotta do is come in here and grade it, you say?
Yeah.
Keep it maintained. Okay, and uh they don't have a spokesperson from that church or group, somebody that?
No, no, David Beckham.
I mean, let's see, now maybe they can kind of explain it's like that, and they would know what we talking about here.
Well, does that road down there, is that bridge still in there? Not a bridge there, what's there?
They got a big pipe across there.
Big pipe.
They put that in themselves.
What? They did? Okay. County put that in? They did. Okay, that don't need, the county put it in. Okay, so this road will tie into that road and they'll still use that pipe?
Yeah.
Okay, where are you gonna need another pipe on that road at?
I'm, I'm here with the factory though.
They don't need, but that'd be a small pipe. Eighteen inch or something. So, so. That just needs to be a small pipe at the end down there. Huh?
There's a pipe at the highway there?
Yes. Well, he said, he talked right down there at the end. Michael, come, if you would, come, let me show you. That's my, I think I, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they gotta hear you.
You gotta, gotta hear you.
Yeah.
You got that map too. You don't?
You wanna take, just take that.
Right there, Steve says it needs to be one right here.
Yep.
Steve says there need to be one right here.
Cause you got all this water coming in right in here. It's all across every line.
Probably eighteen inch, fifteen, eighteen inches.
Cause all this is grass.
Right.
There is right now, but you don't know what they'll do with the future.
He, Tommy them said they would spray this right away and hair it all up and just let, let one rope over there and be it.
So that's just trying to figure where you talking about that pipe at.
Yeah, it would be, it would be right there.
Yeah.
Where you got lots of water that comes in from right here to kind of slip downhill.
He made money for the pipe, I don't really get it, Tommy.
Whatever we, whatever we.
I think he needs to be held to the same standard as everybody else, too.
Tell him to get it up, just need to ride over to us once they get it.
Get it up to par, what, what we require to deed it to us.
Then we can finalize it.
If, if he, if he don't do that, then we, we, we're.
I guess this is.
Once the road built, it's not gonna be that long. Oh, no, we have to get this here.
That's correct.
I mean, I think she explained that part, yeah. Anything else from the person, if you understand?
Put the pipe here.
Right here.
Right across here.
Yes, sir. No, right, we're crossing it.
Right there.
This is that pipe thing that this was doing on the bridge. It's been taken out. This right here, cause you can track this water and it's, cause it slopes off into the cement.
So, have them, they're gonna do the road. Have it built out at their spin.
They just said to the state.
And we take over.
Let him build it.
That's why, that's, as long as we got a pair of them, yeah.
I'm saying, that's what we can do.
Well.
I don't hear it. That's always the state.
Like Tony said, they, they kind of focused on him. He did this to get back here. Cause they was using this to get this all up on the church, you know, and then they wanna build a building on it. So it was kind of like Tommy got pushed in to do this. By the church, church, it wouldn't have been.
Okay, yeah. That's why I went.
Yeah. They gotta give them. I don't, I mean.
You have to have the green, the resolution to approve the green, the resolution to call for the referendum.
No, it wasn't me, that many of his. Yeah, he's a.
Yeah, I checked all that stuff that you said.
Yeah.
So this way, granddaughter stay here. Yeah. Where that cemetery y'all?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so right now, I guess what, what your motion will be is just uh
Yeah.
Let the church own, what is it, deed the property or what else?
I don't even know if they both dated.
We'll get the right of way in the road then.
And they be on a road that we maintain out there, just like we get out.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. They came out in the eighties, didn't they?
Call it with.
I'm gonna say it was in the eighties, cause I just started seeing it when I worked, I worked for the Regional Development Center.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to check with County Engineer, Mr. Scott, to see where we at with the, the US one overpass.
Just asked about it.
Mr. Brad. Does anybody know where we at right now with the US one overpass?
Uh, you, you were on the last conference call. Do you know kind of where they are right now?
Yeah, they uh, they're still, we're trying to make it through the uh, all the environmental protections and uh they have to check the uh, the files sharing back and forth between the bridge department and the roadway department. And uh they're still on track or to uh start the right of way acquisitions in March of twenty twenty-three and construction in FY twenty twenty-four. That was the last thing told us and had nothing to notify us of any delays or anything to be in the back.
So March twenty twenty-three is when they gonna start acquisition?
Yes.
Relocation stuff?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to know.
And we uh, we did uh send the, the matching local money.
Right.
We sent it, we sent ours and the city sent theirs. Uh, and I do know that from what I remember seeing last from DOT is they're using those funds to do the right of way acquisition and uh part of the design.
Okay.
And if there's anything left, they're gonna apply that to construction.
All right.
Our next conference call is tomorrow.
Yeah.
On Albany Avenue, it can, we can vote to one cent, plus and we start it in January. So next.
That'd be nice.
That Steve belong the money to the county to.
We would.
Get the money.
That's right.
Just let them know how much you need.
Yep. We start that job right off. Okay, anybody got anything else? I hear most of the adjournments.
Any motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned to five o'clock.